Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, March 4th, 2020-24 Board of Commissioners Meeting. I'll call the meeting into order. The first to order business this evening, as always, is our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are joined by Pastor Mark Goins of New Life Currituck to lead us in the invocation and pledge. Come on up. Amen, sir.
Father, we ask your blessings tonight, that you would grace us with your presence tonight, Lord. Father, we pray that you would move on these commissioners. We thank you for the men and women that you have raised up, oh God, to lead us and provide vision for our community. I pray, Lord God, that you would infuse them with your wisdom and your insight beyond their abilities. I pray that you will continue to move upon this body in such a way, Lord God, that they become more than the sum total of their individual parts. We acknowledge you, Lord God, and honor you. As your hand moves upon us, that we might live in a way here in this county, that we would have a peaceable life and honor you. Bless this assembly tonight, Lord God, and we give you all the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. If you don't want to stick around. Okay, next up this evening is our Ethics Awareness and Conflict of Interest reminder from our county attorney. Ms. Megan.
Pursuant to GS 153A-44, a commissioner has a duty to vote on matters coming before the board, but may be excused from voting on issues involving the commissioner's own financial interest, official conduct, or on matters on which the commissioner is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234 or 160D-109. In accordance with Chapter 2, Division 3 of the Currituck County Code of Ordinance, it is the duty of every commissioner to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any commissioner have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the Board of Commissioners in this meeting? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict.
Anything this evening from the board? Okay, thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes this evening? Have a motion for approval, please.
They move.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Before we jump into public comment, I just want to make a note that Commissioner Payment is running behind this evening, so if you'll forgive his tardiness when he comes in in a few minutes, look forward to having him join us. This evening, the first real item on the agenda is public comment. As always, the public is able to come up and speak on matters that are of interest to them, and they have three minutes to do so. We have a light system up here. We'll remind anyone who signed up this evening to speak to public comment that we need your name and address for the record when you come up before the Board of Commissioners. And this evening, I have Donna Robertson. Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
Good evening, Donna Robertson, 104 Brumsey Landing Drive, Moayak. First of all, thank you for the prayer. Appreciate that. Thank you to the board and all you who serve. Appreciate y'all doing so. And thank you to all who are in this room, who have chosen to serve our community tonight by being here. First off, I'd like to say early voting. Last figure I got is 1381. So, Moayak, I mean, Currituck, has a population of roughly 29,000 to 30,000. Figure 24,500 roughly registered voters. On that, we do really, really well. But our early voting right now is 1,381 voters. Our only voice is our vote, so please get out and vote. If y'all know someone that needs a ride, take them out to vote. Just get out there. Let your voice and your vote be known. The next thing I'd like to talk about is unity. We've all had a lot of issues in the community lately. The county apparently has had a lot of issues. What I would like to remind everybody is we all have far more in common than we do not. We are a community. Scandals, sure, they're sexy. Lawsuits, that word, it really grabs your attention. How about words like mother, daughter, sister? We all have these. We all have only one community. So let your voice be heard. Vote. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next up, I have Ms. Sibyl O'Neill.
My name is Sibyl O'Neill, and I am from Maple, North Carolina. Bob White, at the February 15th of 2024 special meeting, and I quote, said, "Megan has not been able to concentrate on her job. Ike hasn't been able to concentrate on his job. The county set has come to a standstill." Folks, if we have employees that can't concentrate on their jobs, why are they still employed with that job? When you tell the truth and you don't have anything to worry about, and then you don't have a problem and you can concentrate. How can a body of people find one wrong when there is no proof of wrongdoing? Is it correct for one to say, "He did this, she did that," and everyone believe it because the accusers who think he or she is judge and jury? What thorn has been thrown in the side of the commissioners for them to want to have one resign, thrown off, or censored? Would Bob White like to take back his public statement on February 1st, 2024, when he publicly endorsed Beaumont's interaction with Insight Global and claimed to have informed other board members? Is it because there was no solid proof of wrongdoing so they had to come up with so many untruths, hoping it would brainwash the citizens? The citizens have a right to know. Blackwater Reports has done a wonderful job of telling the truth. It has the facts. Is this what the commissioners are afraid of? Afraid of the public knowing the truth? Did the reporting of the facts cause fear in the commissioners? Have most of the commissioners sitting failed the people? The opinion of most, or they lack morals and ethics? Is it truly the reputation that this county deserves? I wonder how many of the commissioners' constituents would ask for their removal tonight. Bob White said, and I quote, "I will gladly step down out of this headache in a heartbeat." If this job is too hard for one to concentrate, or is too big of a headache, why wouldn't one step down? We need real leadership. Folks that love this county, want the best for the people, and will be fair and honest all of the time. We need to remember the code of ethics in Section 2, 86. Commissioners are expected to uphold the integrity and independence of their office, demonstrating the highest standards of personal integrity and honest in their public activities. And then in Section 2, 88, number 2, the importance of performing the duties of the official diligently requiring commissioners to maintain honesty, patience, and courtesy in their official capacity.
All right. Next up, we have Patrick Martin. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I live in Gibbs Woods, North Carolina, and recently, we had a lot of the commissioners and people that are running for office come over and talk to us. And we kind of had an open floor, and things came up. And I voiced my opinion about something that's happening in my community and on our family farm. It's not my farm, it's my wife's family's farm. They sold half of the farm. The other half belongs to her aunt, who lives in Richmond. And when they sold the farm, they put 13 houses there, and all of them are large houses, 650, what is it, 650, 6,500 square foot homes or bigger. And that half the farm was divided up into 13 sections. The part that their houses are sitting on are about an acre and a half, two acres, and they have a small strip that runs back to the end of the property, which goes across two lead ditches. I live on the end ditch that's out there, all the way over on Reed's Road. Now, the houses come around in a kind of a half shape like this. Middle getting roads is over here. Reed's Road is over here. I live on this end. So all these houses are built like this coming around. We have three people over there that are shooting to the end of the property where there's a lead ditch. They have three berms that are sitting up on that back ditch. That farm on the other side belongs to my wife's aunt. Now, what they're doing is shooting while his family is out there working in the field. She was so frightened that she had to hide underneath the tractor to keep from getting shot, because they were actually shooting over the top of the berms that they had built. One of the berms is actually legal. We're talking 12 foot by eight foot high. The other two are smaller in height. I don't know what the regulations are for them. I don't even know how they got a permit to be able to shoot across agricultural lines there. But they say that that's legal, and they can shoot up to seven o'clock at night. But when someone comes out here and shoots from seven o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night, it becomes a problem. I'm at the other end, on the same ditch where the shooting range is at, and I'm probably 200 yards from the first one on the end. And when they're shooting, my windows rattle. It sounds like it's coming through the house. And there's not much I've been able to do about this. And I asked about it in the meeting over there. I told them I could bring it to your attention. But they're telling me that they have every legal right because the county says that they can put a shooting range in the back of their property. Well, what happens to the poor farmer that's farming out there while they're shooting, and they won't stop? There's got to be an end to this. Is it going to take a farmer getting shot, or his daughter getting shot? What is it going to take for my end down there? It rattles the windows in my house. I've lived out there for 35 years and never had a problem like this, even with all the hunters that are in our community. So what is it that we can do to stop these people from shooting across the farm, a farm field, into a farm that's being farmed, and they won't stop doing that? What can be done about that? How can you change the regulation?
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to cut you off. Can I give you a card, and you can call me tomorrow, and I can help your problem?
Okay.
Yep. Call. This is my work cell phone call.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you getting back.
Do you have something to say?
So, Mr. Martin, real quick, it doesn't, from a shooting perspective, part that is absolutely rock solid is any target shooting, the projectiles are not supposed to leave the premises of which they're being shot at.
Well, it's backed up against the other half of the farm. And I'm talking, it's not as wide as this room from the ditch. It's more like from here to the wall from the ditch.
Depends on where.
And they're shooting into the field on the other side. It's going across the berm. The lady was being shot at. She had to crawl under her equipment to keep from getting shot.
And I heard, trust me, I understand, had a similar event at our house, and I've got a farm, and we still had rounds going overhead.
Right.
But they were using a pizza box as a berm. So, anyway.
They have a berm. It looks like a nice berm. I'm not complaining about.
We'll get you taken care of, so.
Call me tomorrow. I'll fix your problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention this evening and making it strip around. All right, next up, we have H. V. Cole.
Hey, everybody. Everybody call me Cole. I'm here tonight with a heart, heart.
Okay, Ms. Cole, would you tell us where your address is, please, for the record?
Your what?
Your address, please. Where are you from?
I'm from Currituck County.
Okay.
I'm trying to get in a hurry right now. I came to Currituck County 50 years ago. I was in the Navy. As we all know, the county's changed a lot since then. But I'm here tonight to speak for something that bothered me when I read about it. I've been knowing that man right there for 50, 30 years. He went to work for me on a deal that was, when he was a lawyer, and he handled it well. From my understanding, and being in the county, he has done as much for this county as anybody ever come down here done him. And now, we send him on his way for some reason or another. Some of the things I've heard, it's been really disgusting, our county commissioners letting it get out. I don't know who put it out. I don't care who put it out. It wasn't right. For a man to work as hard as he has for this county, and there ain't nobody in this room that ever worked any harder than he did and done a good job at it, and to send him off the way y'all sending him off, it's a disgrace to this county, this McCounty, and these people, all of you, whoever is doing this. But he is a good man, and he will be a good man forever. And it's a shame. I hope that I never have to come back in front of you people on anything like this again. And my heart goes out to that man, because I know him, been knowing him when he was a whippersnapper. And he was, but he done his job. And I appreciate it, and I appreciate what he's done for this county. And I think the people of the county appreciate it. And that's all I have to say, though. It wasn't bad what ended up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up is Mark Lusinger.
Yes, Lusinger.
Lusinger, R on the end. Got it. Thank you.
Mark Lusinger, 118 Aviator Drive in beautiful Maple, North Carolina. I don't know why you'll be brought on a cold rainy night, but appreciate you being here. The current board's getting a lot of bad press for uncontrolled building in Moayak, 30% increase in property taxes, general dissension in the ranks with members of the county manager contract not being renewed, and board members being censured. Now I hear Ike is going to retire anyway. I hate to see you go. I've just gotten used to you. November 6th, I came in and gave a presentation on a new county building, maintenance building that has so many lights on it. It's a public nuisance. And I followed that up with email and letter to the county manager. Not much changed after that. Now I have a petition signed by the majority of the property owners in that whole neighborhood, all saying it's a public nuisance. It's a waste of power, a possible safety of flight issue. I've had several pilots say, "The lights on that building are so bright, you can't see the runway lights come in at night." So that's a problem for you. I mean, none of you folks would want to live next to that building with all the lights on, and neither do we. There's generally no one there at night, so other than a possible security light over the door, there's no need for it to be lit up. A motion sensor would take care of that, still give you security, and it would be, the cost of that would probably be offset by the savings in power. Here's your big opportunity to do the right thing, turn the lights off. And I've got a petition signed by all the neighbors. I've got about 25 on here. I don't know who would like to have this, if anybody.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, that was the last person I had sign up. Is there anyone that came in late that would like to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
Steve Hedrick, 296 Summit Farms Trail. First and foremost, tomorrow's election day. There'll be some new faces come up next year. Those of you who are moving on to other places, thank you for your service. Thank you for everything you've done for the county. Mr. Ike, appreciate what you've done for us. Just a little bit of research on the PBs that are coming up tonight for Kellogg Supply and one for the increase in the lot sizes. I support both of them, just so you know. I think the Kellogg Supply Company, after looking at their plans and what they're wanting to accomplish, I think it'd be a great help for people further down the county to get what they need a lot quicker than going too far, too far out of their way. And of course, the other one, it's always great to increase your square footage on your lot sizes. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, was there anyone else? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public comment and move on to Commissioner Report. And start with you tonight, Ms. Kitty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Saturday, I attended the Regional Science Olympiad Awards Ceremony at the College of the Album Hall in Lisbon City, and I'd like to congratulate all the participants. In the high school division, JP Naff Early College took first place and will advance on to the state competition. The second place winner was Currituck County High School. And in the middle school division, Moayak Middle School took second place overall. Also, the Science Olympiad Spirit Awards, which are among the highest honors given to teams and recognizes, which recognizes students and coaches that have a positive attitude, good teamwork, have respect for the rules and their fellow competitors, and exhibit sportsmanship-like conduct. This year, the Morgan Spirit Award went to not one school in Currituck, but two schools. JP Naff Early College and Moayak Middle School, both were awarded the Spirit Award, which I think is quite an accomplishment. And I would like to congratulate all the teams. And also, I'll give a little cheer out to my granddaughter, who's a middle grade, Moayak Middle School sixth grader, Lily Jenkins, who participated. And last but not least, as we've been told, tomorrow's election day. The polls open at 6:30 in the morning, close at 7:30 that evening. Make sure you bring voter ID, because you will need it to vote. If you have any questions, give the Election Board Office a call at 232-2525. Everybody get out and vote tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's March, so that means it's March for Meals. And that is the program that provides our senior nutrition program, more commonly known as Meals on Wheels. This was a tradition, March on Meals, that began in 1972, when Richard Nixon signed into law the Older Americans Act of 1965 Amendments. And this established the program for seniors 60 years and older. For more than 45 years, these critical programs have provided nutritional meals to our seniors that are not able to get out, but many of them are shut in. And this happens in virtually every single community across the country, including Currituck County. Our dedicated staff here and our volunteers deliver these meals Monday through Friday each week. And it's more than just a meal that they deliver. It's a way to check on our seniors. It's a way for them to feel seen. It's a way for them to feel heard and to still be connected to this wonderful community. I encourage you to get involved. I always say, and I still mean, it's the best thing I do every single month. They are so thankful. I love to hear the stories of how Currituck was, where they came from. Many of them are veterans, and it really does just warm my heart to spend time with these seniors. So I encourage you to contact our senior center, 252-232-35035, 3505, and get involved. And you two will say it's the best thing you do all month. Thank you.
Thank you. You ready to go, or you want me to?
No, I'm good. Ike, relative to Mark's concerns, I know we've been talking about this for six months or so, and is there something that can be done with that? Because, I mean, it is bright. I don't know that an aircraft's going to hit the ground because they're.
Well, first of all, William Nelson, Airport Manager, has reported to me that there is no issue relative to pilots or aircraft.
Right to that.
Secondly, in fact, the airport staff finds it to be very helpful to have that area lit, when they have to go out there at night, for example. So does public works. Now, I understand that perhaps maybe there's been some discussion that amber lights rather than LED lighting might be helpful. The other thing is understand that this is an airport to which this residential community came. And this airport's under a lot of development. In fact, we're getting ready to construct a new fueling facility, which is going to be lighted, and needs to be lighted for persons coming in to fuel aircraft. So we're getting ready to start working toward adding new hangars, which will be lighted. So there's going to be increasing activity and increasing lights at our airport. With regard to this particular building, for, I guess, some temporary period of time, perhaps we can look at some amber form of lights to try to reduce what some are claiming is bothersome to them. But the fact of the matter is, this is an airport that's going to continue to develop.
I know I have new neighbors that have really bright lights, and when you're used to it being pitch black, it is really lit. So, anyway, just.
I mean, one other thing that we have talked about as well is to put some type of wrapping on the fence along the Brady Landing side of the airport to try to reduce.
Kind of opaque defense.
Yeah, to reduce the glare of lighting. That might be something else we can try.
Well, I guess my question would be, why not making this to be sounding stupid, although coming out of my mouth, it's started going that way. The lights are there to facilitate operations at night, or just overall security?
A little of both. As I said, it's had the extra benefit of providing some security and airport staff comfort on the airport side of things from those lights. And also for our public works folks who may have to go out at night. I mean, they, yes, they've expressed some concern about not running into a bear or other wildlife, which we know inhabit that area out there. So, I mean, that's operationally what the county determined at the time it built the building was necessary in order to have adequate operation.
Well, I think if we looked at amber, that certainly might offer some benefit.
I can speak to our public works director and ask that he take a look at that.
Thank you, sir. FIA meeting was held last Monday. DEQ came in from, I can't even remember where they traveled from, but they traveled far and wide to come and brief the fire departments on basically air quality following, you know, open burning. Specifically, one of the things that I would remind Currituck County residents of is that open burning, while you may be allowed to, you're limited to burning only those things that occur in basically their natural form. So, paper's out, cardboard's out, definitely your spare tires are out. But the point being, you know, people can complain if other things are being burned, and DEQ has basically assured us that they will come out and investigate. And there are some pretty hefty fines associated with that. It was specifically brought out relative to Carova Beach. DEQ provided training, which I think got sent to Jeff Walker, because I talked to him afterwards, or the next day.
We addressed it.
So, one of the things is getting the word out to law enforcement that, in fact, they can shut down illegal burns at Carova due to the fire hazard. So, there was that. And then finally, I attended the Business Expo. My timing was impeccable. It was after it raining. It was quite enjoyable to see how many businesses were out there, a bunch from Currituck, but far more from outside the county. But it was a really nice event, and kudos to the chamber, which, who I believe puts that on. That's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Kim?
I got a few things. The, there is a lot of good that goes on in the county on a regular basis. I attended the Business Expo for a couple hours. It was very nice. There was a benefit a couple weekends ago for a Moayak resident. I'm going to say her name. I don't think she'll be offended, but Jessica Worrell, who works for LJ Beaners, a lot of commissioners. Ms. Kitty took pies in the face. I took the Dunkin' booth. I think I raised the most money. I didn't know if that maybe hurt my pride a little bit, that everybody wanted to get me wet. Selena sat in the Dunkin' booth. I felt bad for her and dunked her one time, just so she could sit in the water and warm up.
Worst 30 minutes of my life.
Owen took the. Owen took the pie to the face, too. I think Ms. Kitty might have slept the night out there before to get it. I'm just kidding. But, you know, and like I said, it was a nice benefit. They raised almost 20 grand. So there is a lot of good that goes on in this company, or in this county, for people. So, nice family, lives in Moyoc, they've lived here probably a decade. You know, so like I said, that was a good event. They, I mean, a lot of great stuff. So like I said, it's not all negative. Like I said, I'm really, like, participating in that kind of stuff because it's really nice. We're getting ready to start back to the grind and getting busier with every stuff, budget and all that stuff. I do want to mention a couple retirees, and when you mention names, you're going to forget somebody. If I forget somebody, I apologize. It's nothing purpose. Donna Volivo retired last week, who'd worked for the county for 36 years in the planning department. I wish her well, good luck, Donna. And David Castello retired from the jail. He was the captain at the jail. I worked with David hand-in-hand. He had 30 years and maybe a little bit more, don't hold me to that. But, like I said, some of our biggest liability in the county comes from, especially through the Sheriff's Office, and Ike, as well as Megan can attest for this, as being attorneys, is through the jail, as well as through, like, civil process, through the Sheriff's Office. But, like I said, good job to both of them and enjoy their retirement. Like I said, people have already stepped up who are going to be in their new spot and wish them luck. Like I said, there is the negativity, let's move on from it and go to positive. I can argue with you today and be your friend tomorrow. Like I said, there's, everybody's, you know, like I said, it's, we're moving to get things done. I'm trying to think, there was something else I wanted to say. Early voting, like I said, 1,400, I think typically we have around 2,000. Usually, early vote, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Kitty, I know she...
About 17%.
Yeah, so, that, the number was, the weather was crappy, too, though, if people wanted to go out and vote. I actually early voted on Friday. And like you said, if you haven't voted, go vote. If you don't vote, you know, you kind of can't complain because that's the time for you to, to speak your voice by voting. So tomorrow's Election Day, from 6:30 to 7:30, you can vote. If you don't know where you go vote at, look on the website. And like you said, make sure if you don't vote, I'm not being ugly when I say this, you can't complain. But voting is a way for you to speak your voice, to complain. And Donna got up and spoke. She's my neighbor, super-nice lady. I like to say condolences to her for her dog that passed away. She walks that dog all the time, and I'm not going to try to make her sad. But, like I said, very sorry for your passing of your dog, because she treated that dog better than probably most humans. Not, not that she treats humans bad, but like I said, I do want to say that, because like I said, she walked that dog. I don't care if it was raining, if it was snowing or sleet, and that dog was treated like a...
One of the family.
A royal person, so, it's part of the family, so, that's it for me. I was fairly unwinded. But be nice to each other. Social media, I swear, is the devil. I mean, just like I said, it's, you know, if you can't say something nice, don't say nothing at all.
What did Dan call it, Satan's book?
Yeah, like I said, but, like I said, thanks, everybody, and Owen's up.
All right. Owen? Well, that's a good handoff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like Kevin said, we did participate in the fundraiser for Jessica, and I considered it an honor and a privilege to take a pie in the face for her. She's been there since the first day LJ Beaners opened, and she's always been kind, polite, and very professional, so she deserves a helping hand up. I was at the Business Expo the whole time, from 9:30 in the morning till 4 o'clock that afternoon, and first thing that morning, I said, "Well, this is going to be a bust," because it was raining, but it cleared off, and I guess the good Lord shined down upon it, and people really turned out after lunchtime. Lastly, as it's been said, tomorrow is Election Day, and folks, don't believe that the election is over tomorrow night at 7:30, because North Carolina, in its zeal to be part of Super Tuesday, votes in March on presidential years and May and other years for the primaries. So you've got between now and November, if you didn't vote in the primary tomorrow, or you don't vote, to do your research, because this election in November is going to be very pivotal for North Carolina. And we need to put the best people in office so that we can continue as a state, as you might have read or heard, North Carolina is now recognized by, like, Forbes Magazine and several others to be the number-one state to do business in. And it's because of policies that were put in place about 10 years ago to right the ship, financial ship, of North Carolina, and needs to keep sailing down that path. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brant, you got anything this evening?
I do, and first of all, let me apologize to the board and the citizens out there. Working the rain just caught me kind of, and anybody traveling in the rain in Virginia knows the delays you can run into. Apologize on that, but I just wanted to state a couple things. I sit on the Albemarle Regional Health Board, and we just had our state audit turned into the state of North Carolina. We have to do that, like the counties, every year, and do a financial audit, have it turned in by an independent firm. And the, it was a strong audit. The reports came back very, very good. Found no issues with Albemarle Regional Health's financial status. And that being said, it was such a strong audit that it put Albemarle Regional Health, it was called a low-risk audit for next year, which means they don't have to go in-depth as much like they normally do, because it was such a great audit, and they had such a reserve percent. I think you wanted 8% reserve to carry over the next month, like you do with the state. Well, they've, Albemarle Regional Health has it like 32%, which will carry me about four to five months if something should happen to the funding, so they have a very strong Also, in the budget, in the state budget this year, there's $800 million for mental health. That's for the whole state of North Carolina. And of that, $30 million is designated for, for the child behavior health, which is something that this whole country needs, is we need to, we need mental health as much as we can. So with that being said, the, every health department in the state was asked, "Okay, we've got $30 million to divvy out, there's 100 counties, you know, put your wishlist in." Well, we put in $1.2 million to try to see how much we'll get out of that. And the goal is, if we can capture any of that money, the goal is to work on getting an established clinical person for child behavior health in each county, to Currituck to have their own, and the other participating eight counties. That's important to the Albemarle Regional Health, mental health. We're trying to work with the best we can. We're trying to grab the funding anytime it's available. So out of that 800 million, there's 80, 80 million for the whole state, so we're trying to get 1.2 million, which I think, if we can get any portion of that to help with child behavior health, is going to be a positive. The total operating budget this year for Albemarle Regional Health is $48 million. That's what they operate their ICPTA, their inter, inter...
Inter-county.
Inter-county transportation buses that you see, along with all the other services that they offer to all the, to all the other counties. So that, and it's a strong budget. It's been going up a little bit each year, which is a good thing. Albemarle Regional Health also hired another employee for Currituck County-specific, which is going to help with application processes and help with inspections. They just found somebody, they just got him in, so it's going to be, it's going to be benefited strictly for Currituck County because of, of the need that the county has with, with applications of septic systems and inspections, so that's a positive there. And one of the long-term goals we discussed is, how do we reach our outlying, more rural areas, like the Corolla, the Gibbs Woods, south end of the county? One of the long-term calls that the entire board discussed was trying to get enough nurse practitioners, LPNs, whatever we can, to try to have somebody that can travel to, like, Stadletat offices. And I know we've been talking about possibly at the lower end of the county and possibly Corolla. Those are the two target areas. And then if we can work on that, maybe we can get some other resources to do some of the others. Have somebody go, maybe have a schedule once or twice a week. At least you can make schedules, and it does provide some health, needed health services through our county, which is a positive thing there. So that's some of the long-term goals, but the problem at all healthcare, I don't care if you talk to hospitals, doctors, offices, whatever, there's a shortage of nurses and nurse practitioners. Everybody's grabbing for them, and it's hard to get them right now, but we're trying the best we can, and the more we can get, the better we'll be able to provide for all the counties, including Currituck. That's pretty much all I had tonight, so thank you.
All right, that was a good one. Thank you, sir. I'll be brief. I just wanted to say good luck to everyone that has put their name in the hat to try and be a commissioner or any other elected office. It is a often thankless job, and it doesn't pay much, and it demands a lot of your time. We have a couple people in the audience tonight that, that have been coming to meetings, and I wish them well, everyone that signed up, that put yourself out there, because it's not an easy job, and a lot of things can get said about you, good, bad, or indifferent. Ike, we've talked about Ike retiring. I do want to say I'll miss Ike. One of my favorite Ikeisms is read all the words. So, a couple things you said to me stuck over the years. I appreciate your counsel over the years of working with you, and you will be missed. We had an ABC board meeting last week, and the AB store, new ABC store in Corolla is coming along. We hope to have that open in the next couple of weeks, maybe even before spring break. Just depends on how things go with getting fixtures in that store and trying to stock that store and move the old store. So it's, it's kind of up in the air. It's been plagued a little bit with delays, so hopefully we'll have that open very soon. And that's it for me this evening. Next up this evening is County Manager Report, Mr. McCray.
I sent this afternoon to the board, two emails we've received over the last week from the Department of Transportation. The first one is a notice of a Teams meeting, and I forwarded the link to the board for this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Anybody that wants to listen in on a pre-scoping meeting for a proposed project, or at least evaluation of a project, that would reduce North Carolina Highway 168 from five lanes down to a four-lane divided highway from Guinea Mill Road in Moyoc north to the state line. So I've sent that to you for your consideration, in case you're interested. It sounds like it'd be a pretty, a pretty big project and pretty impactful to the Moyoc community. And then we also received an email from Department of Transportation regarding the Edgewater Drive Safety Project that was proposed down in Commissioner Jarvis's area of the county. They are looking to the county for comment on whether, what is the county's position on DOT going forward? There's also attached to that email some data from DOT about automobile accidents and trends they're seeing, although they seem to note in the email that, that probably three to four more years before they actually would have a good grasp on whether the reduction in speed limit is actually having an impact, and that if this project does not go forward now, then they cannot be assured of funding availability at some time in the future, should the county desire such a project. So, again, looking to the board to respond to the email so that we can then let DOT what Currituck County's position is on that project. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up, County Attorney. Anything for you this evening?
Yes, just briefly, the county is currently under contract to purchase the 16 acres that is immediately adjacent to the airport, and the purpose, I believe, is down the road to add some hangars to that. So we're expecting to close within maybe 30 days, 30 to 45 days.
Great.
That's all I have.
All right. All right, next up, we have a public hearings. Item one is PB 23-34, Kellogg Supply Company, request for an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 4, use standards, Chapter 5, development standards, and Chapter 10, definitions and measurement to add a new home improvement sales establishment use consisting of retail sales with increased outdoor storage and sales areas to accommodate larger items such as lumber. Good evening, Mr. Lurie. How are you doing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. So the reason for this text amendment is that the current ordinance language allows a certain amount of outdoor storage associated with business or retail use. Currently, I think it's 25% of the buildable area or floor area of the building, and for a business like Kellogg Supply Company that have larger items that they need to store and/or sell outdoors, and the circulation area needed along with that to make that work, 25% just isn't enough. So this amendment's intended to give more flexibility on the size of that outdoor storage area while protecting the way those businesses might appear from the highway when you're driving by. And you can see here, it's proposed, this type of business is proposed to be allowed in general business, limited business, village center, light and heavy industrial. And of course, we have a set of specific standards that go along with this, and I'll just go through those briefly. Home improvement sales establishment uses shall not be located within 125 feet of a residential district. Outdoor sales and storage areas shall not be located between the front facade of the principal building and the street, and shall be screened from off-site views by opaque fences or walls with a minimum height of eight feet. That's two feet taller than the fence that's normally required around an outdoor storage area. Also, in an effort to further screen, there are understory trees required every 15 feet on center, and shall be located outside and immediately adjacent to the required fences or walls. They're going to have typically a mixture of open structures that don't have four walls, it might be a three-walled structure, and then would also maybe have just some roof coverings with stuff piled underneath. And D suggests that if there are open sides to any of these structures, that they not face directly at the street. And then, they, those type of structures are exempt from the normal building design standards in the ordinance, but they would have to choose three of these four items here as far as design is concerned. A series of four or more pilasters having a minimum depth of eight inches, a minimum width of eight inches, and shall extend to the full facade height. A facade material or color changes, a pitched or a mansored roof, and then faux windows or Bermuda shutters that occupy 25% of the facade width. Any questions about any of that so far?
I have a question, far as like, obviously, everybody knows that it was Hayman's, and if it's approved, it'll be Kellogg's. You pull in from Kevin's Sitco across, you take a right heading south on 158. The buildings to the right are already currently open buildings. To my knowledge, I want to say everything is open. I mean, it's going to stay similar, like, obviously, they don't face the highway, so they're storing stuff in there. I mean, are they tearing those down, putting new, or is that maybe a question for them?
Yeah, we've seen, go ahead.
I mean, I could wait till he comes up. Like I said, I mean, and I'm by all means for it, but I just, I do have a few questions, just like you said, to make sure everything's...
Right.
...good for us, good for them, everybody wins.
Okay. Anyone else? Here, we're establishing a parking standard for this type of use. Normal retail sales establishments are one space for every 300 square feet of the building. We've brought that down and had it be the same for this, but we've added one space for 2,000 square feet of covered, unheated, or open outdoor sales area, which is consistent with the warehousing parking standard, and we felt this is appropriate. We would, in Chapter 10, add some rules and characteristics and examples for this type of use. And I'll just read through this quickly. Commercial enterprises that provide home improvement goods and/or services directly to the customer, where such goods are available for immediate purchase and removal from the premises by the purchaser. A portion of the use is engaged in the sale and/or storage of home improvement materials, supplies, and equipment, while a portion of the use is engaged in retail sales of such goods and/or services. A limited area may be utilized for outdoor sales and storage, and covered, unheated spaces that may or may not have walls protect large item and other sales areas from the elements. Example use types include home improvement goods and services, hardware, rope, fencing, building materials such as lumber, piping, and other lawn and garden materials, including plantings, bagged fertilizer, bagged mulch, bagged feed, paver blocks, et cetera. The request is consistent with the Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including Land Use Goal 3 and Economic Development Goal 1. The Planning Board and staff recommend approval of the request because it is in conformance with the general purpose and intent of the Unified Development Ordinance, and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including... including land use goal three and economic development goal one. And with that, I'll leave you with the review standards and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from Ms. Little?
I have a question. Right now, it stands at 25% of the heated space inside. Will there be a maximum now or not?
We did entertain the notion of putting a new number in there, but in the end, when you, when you run the numbers, it's really just the lot coverage and setbacks that are going to determine that area and it has to be behind the building as well. So, it's going to be kind of contained in an area with setbacks, coverage, and being behind the structure that we felt it wasn't important and could be problematic later for someone coming in where they, we said 50% and they need 53 and we're here again for a text amendment.
Okay. Anything, sir? All right. Thank you. And then we have the applicant actually here and talking to Kevin here. Come on up, introduce yourself.
How's everybody today? My name is Joe Gacke. This is Chris O'Neil.
Evening, gentlemen.
We're the owners of Kellogg Supply from Killilah Hills and Kitty Hawk, respectively. Thank the board for their time to hear the amendment as well as the community and we appreciate the planning board and the committee working with us to get us to this point. This is a new endeavor for us, so navigating the system to get to this point and working with the community has been a positive experience. So, we appreciate all the help that everybody has given us to this, to this point. Little bit about Kellogg. We've been serving northeastern North Carolina since 1946. We take pride in the fact that we're locally owned and operated and along with that is being very involved in, in the community. Living in the community, we obviously have high standards and want the aesthetics of all of our buildings to, to fit in with the community and increase the aesthetics, the perception, the view, increase the outlook or the, I guess, just the look of the community and our surrounding properties. So, that was one of the reasons we wanted to work so closely with the, with the town to get the amendment was we wanted to put forth after this a site plan that was going to be attractive. So, anyways, please, if you haven't seen any of our other locations, please look at them. That'll give an idea of what we bring to the table and some of our locations are in residential areas and yet we still make the business model work and I feel that if you ask community members, they'll agree that we are, are good neighbors. So, our plan is that I won't spend, we don't have actual renderings. That'll be the next step. If the amendment were to pass, then we will put forth our site plan proposal that will include and give everybody a visual of what the aesthetics would look like of the exterior plans. To speak to your question about the open-sided buildings, that is actually a different piece of property than the one that the Haymans building is on. So, that is not, that is not part of the proposed site plan or won't be because that's a different parcel that unfortunately isn't for sale at the moment.
So, also, all your stuff where, like you pull in the gate, all your stuff will be in the back?
So, basically, what our, what we're looking at is, you know what the current building is that's there. To the left of it, we would be putting together a three-sided shed that the back is facing the street with the proposed amendments so that there would, we would have an additional structure that was added to, to shield the lumber and any other material that, from the street view. So, we have a three-phase plan in the long term of what we'd like it to look like, but the structures that we have, we would have added additional one to shield everything from the street. Other than that, I mean, I have to, again, just thank the community for their support. It's throughout the process. It's actually been fantastic, the number of people that have reached out and encouraged us to try to, to make this happen. And Ms. Joanne at Haymans, couldn't ask for her to be any nicer and she has been awesome to work with. She wants to continue for that site to be able to provide hardware and lumber as her family has for so long. So, it was just an awesome experience working with her and trying to make this happen. And obviously, the engineers here, if there's any specific questions that I can't answer and Chris, you may have a few things to add.
Yeah, I was just going to. Chris O'Neil, co-owner Kellogg Supply with Joe, chief financial officer as well. Little bit about me, I've been with Kellogg Supply for going to be 20 years in August. I've lived on the Outer Banks for 30 years. I graduated from Manu High School in 1995. My wife, Meyer, actually graduated from, from Currituck High School in 1999. Her brother, Justin Hill, still teaches there, coaches varsity baseball team. So, this little section of northeast North Carolina is near and dear to my heart. So, I just, to that end, I just wanted to reaffirm that Joe and I, you know, just want to be good stewards of a great company towards our employees, our customers, and to our community. So, that's, that we serve. So, that's our goal and Currituck County has a bright and exciting future and we would love to be part of it. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
What's the total acreage of the property that, I know as Ms. Haymans has the, and the separate, I thought that was all, which maybe that is hers and that's not being whatever, but what's the total property acreage of what you guys are going to have on your facility?
I believe it's about seven acres.
Okay.
It's a long stretch. That goes way back. So, the front part is the widest, the street version of it.
I hope. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. As this is a public hearing, the public is allowed to comment on this. And I don't have anyone signed up this evening for public comment other than the people that were just before us. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this agenda item this evening that did not sign up? All right. Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and any further discussion from the board or you guys ready to move on? I'll entertain a motion if someone would like to forth a motion on this agenda item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve PB 23-34 Currituck County text amendment because the request is in conformance with the general purpose and the intent of Unified Development Ordinance and is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of Imagine Currituck 2040 Vision Plan, including land use goal three and economic development goal one. The, I guess, I didn't need to read the text amendment review standards. Number one is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan and other applicable county adopted plans. Two, or can I just say we're going to add, put those seven, or do you want me to read them?
I'm not sure.
No, you don't need to read them.
Okay, cool. That won't hurt my feelings neither.
Right.
So, one through seven on the text amendment or anybody else's, one through seven on the text amendment review standards as listed in our agenda packet, which is on page?
Five.
Page five. Please include that with my motion and.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's second. Any further discussion from the board?
No, not really discussion, but just thanking them for their proposed investment in Currituck County.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Thank you. Next up this evening is PB 24-03 Currituck County. A request to, for an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter Three Zoning Districts to Increase Minimum Lot Size for Conservation Subdivisions in the Single Family Residential Mainland Zoning District from 25,000 to 30,000 square feet. Good evening, Ms. Jenny. How are you today?
I'm great. Hope you guys are. Good evening to the board. This text amendment actually was directed during the October 4th and 5th work sessions that the board held to increase the minimum lot size for conservation subdivisions in the SFM Single Family Residential Mainland Zoning District by 5,000 square feet. And when it comes to the text of the ordinance, it's a pretty simple amendment for just a strike through with the 25,000 and adding in the 30,000 square feet. But I did find a sample subdivision that has those 30,000 square foot lots. It's Sound Woods subdivision here, which was a conservation subdivision with a similar zoning and this is a project that's 25.39 acres, about 25 acres, 19 lots, densities .75 dwelling units per acre. The lot sizes vary from 30,000 to 50,000, 482 square feet. I've zoomed in just a little bit here so you can see in this area, the lots are, are coming in just over 30,000 square feet. Same here, I believe there's one lot right here, lot seven, that's just under 30,000 square feet and then on this, on the, toward the sound, there's some lots that are a little bit larger. I pulled this image from Google Earth. This is that same subdivision on the ground. So, you can see the lots that have been developed at this point. The text amendment is consistent with the land use plan, including land use goal one. The planning board and staff recommend approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has at this time.
Okay. Just want to make a verbal note, I guess. I think my understanding was that when we did this, we were looking at only doing limited service districts with 30,000 square foot lots, not everything on single-family mainland.
If that's the amendment that the board would like to, to approve tonight, then that certainly can be done through the motion.
Okay. And I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention because it was, it's a little bit different than what's presented here tonight and to the public that's out there that agrees with having larger lots, the board has worked over the last year to change that and actually made all subdivisions, basically conservation subdivisions, changed densities to create less housing on a particular parcel of land and also taken away the ability to use wetland as part of that calculation. Is it, I got that right, right?
That's correct. Those changes were adopted in September, on September 5th.
Right. And so, the particular piece of land, neighborhood you just showed us, under, under the new configuration would have even less homes in it because they can no longer use those wetlands and a big chunk of that, it looked like was wetland when you, all the tree area basically is wetland, right?
Yeah. So, the, the density calculation wouldn't, wouldn't include the wetland area. That's correct.
Right. So, we would, even without this change that we're talking about tonight, just, just to the public, as, as part of the things that have been said is that, you know, we're, we're overdeveloping, there's too much, too many people moving in, all that stuff. Just wanted to make people aware, since they're tuned in, that we have taken steps to cut back on the number of homes available on a particular parcel of land through taking away some of the calculations that were previously allowed to, to count towards your, your lot coverage.
I would just like to say that I would really like to see 30,000 in all parts. I know it's up to the board, but to me, anything we can do at this point to make new subdivisions feel more like Currituck instead of tiny lots and where people buy something and then realize they can't put pools or outbuild, outbuildings and sheds. To me, as a person who lives in a subdivision with 30,000 or greater lots, I think this is a great idea in moving forward, at least for a while. I'm not saying that it's never going to change, but to me, this type of lot feels more like Currituck.
Can, Mr. Chairman, if I can ask, now this, and I was, this is just mainland, correct?
Correct. Single-family mainland.
Okay. And the other thing, one thing too, like a lot of people don't understand too, like some of these subdivisions, the acreage in some of them is there's so much, like Rivers Edge, for example, it's like almost 78 acres of open space of grass that needs to be mowed and some of the, you know, I mean, that's which affects people's due, somebody has to cut the grass and all that stuff. So, like I said, that's one thing that, when there's a lot of open space that costs, like the subdivision she showed, those are some, some of the thickest woods and wetlands you can go through. But like I said, that's one thing that just, that people don't understand, like when there's open space, you know, big fields and stuff like that in some of those neighborhoods, that costs a lot of money to maintain. Okay. So, I guess one of the first questions I would have is this, this lot size doesn't affect density, correct?
Correct.
So, the density is going to remain, we're going to have just as many houses. The only this, the only thing that this in effect does is stretch the lot that the house is on.
Correct.
Do you have anything that you can show us what this lot size would look like compared to the 25,000 that you can show us, you know, here's what this looks like from, you know, the houses closer together or something like that? I mean, I, I do appreciate this layout, but I don't, I mean, I'm not sure there is an appreciable difference between 25,000 and 30,000 to most people. I mean, some would certainly see it, but I can tell you the lots in Whalehead are 20,000 square feet and I have plenty of room to put in a really nice swimming pool. I have a really nice septic field and they used to have a well there. So, there's enough room and I could have multiple sheds. So, there's plenty of room to do that. You know, part of it is, you know, buyers need to figure out what they're doing and you can't prevent everyone from making mistakes, but what I would, what I would suggest is, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see a side-by-side as to what a 20,000 or 25,000 square foot lot looks like compared to a 30,000 square foot lot. Because right now, I, I don't know that I can tell the difference one way or the other and so that I feel like, you know, we did six months of discussions and, you know, we're back to this again and anyway.
Yeah. I didn't find a subdivision that had 25,000 square foot lots. There are some that have 20,000 square foot lots, but not any in the middle.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, take 100 acres square, let's say, and if you do 30,000 square foot lots over top of 25,000 square foot lots, that eats up 500,000 square feet. Divide that by acreage, you lose 12 acres of open space. In Rivers Edge, that open space is their subject.
Drain field repair areas.
Because that's different. But you lose 12 acres for open space and one of the things that I've said all along is with open space, if it comes out of a farm field, they can rent it to a farmer and have a source of income for the HOA.
What's the size lots? I was trying to sit here and think because we know a couple in that, in Glenmore. What's, aren't Glenmore's about 25,000, 25 to 30?
I think so. They're, I'm not sure.
I think they're about 25 to 30 and there's a lot of open space in that too.
So, Jenny, this text amendment changes the open space requirement?
No, just the lot size.
It would make the open space, like Owen said, a little bit smaller, which is not, even though I'm in the landscaping business, is not a bad thing because somebody has to pay to cut all that grass.
Well, your minimum open space wouldn't be reduced by that.
Oh, yeah. I'm saying with using like Owen's scenario of like a perfect square, I was just saying because like you, you know, some of them, it's just. Wait a minute. So, the open space requirement would still exist?
There'd be a minimum open space requirement like there is currently.
Okay. So, in effect, it is changing the density.
You may not be able to.
It would affect it.
It's another law.
You may have to remove one lot to get your.
Like this, this lot that's, that's up here, this neighborhood, under our new rules with taking the wetland out, might go from, what is it, 19 lots down to 12 or something like that, right? Because now.
No, no. No, I get that, but going back to the no wetlands, right? If a percentage is set aside for open space, right, and then we're now increasing lot sizes, there's, by 5,000 square feet per lot, we are in fact impacting density.
Right.
We're by a significant amount. I mean, five, doing math. Yeah, you would lose. Six, seven percent reduction or increase in, in.
You'd probably lose a lot to get your open area.
You're, you're also assuming that there's no wetlands on the portion that you're developing.
True. Well, the wetlands don't count one way or the other, correct?
They don't count for density, correct, but they could count towards open space required.
And I base my calculation on one acre density, not lot size. And in the long run, as the infrastructure is put in for like water down the road, it's going to create fewer square, or fewer, fewer linear feet of water line to be repaired sometime in the future for the water system, which will be borne by the users.
Right.
How long have we been talking about this? When we first started, it was.
When we first started, it was supposed to be an acre. Now, it's moved down to 30,000 square feet.
It's a conservation, it's a different type of subdivision.
Mine won't explain what is a conservation subdivision.
Yeah, and Jenny, probably you could put that more eloquently than I, even having a writing here.
Well, it's a subdivision that requires additional open space than a traditional development subdivision, which the board removed back in September when the amendment was adopted. And it requires a theme, and generally, that's wetland conservation. It could be farmland conservation. And there's requirements for primary conservation area and secondary conservation area, and your primary conservation area has to be put in, under a conservation easement, so it has to be preserved in that manner. So, it's, it's similar to an, like an open space subdivision.
Right.
But it just requires a little bit more open space than the traditional development did.
In a conservation subdivision, you, you had, we originally had smaller lots, too, you kind of clumped the houses together and tightened them up, so that you created that more open space. Is that a correct way of saying it?
I don't know if the lot sizes were reduced with the, I mean, of, in general, yes, the lot sizes were smaller in a conservation subdivision. That's correct.
Right.
More open space, smaller lot sizes, whereas traditional development had a little bit larger lot size, a little bit less open space requirement.
But when we last met and discussed, intensity was a primary driver, and that's why we got rid of the traditional subdivisions. We went purely conservation because of, number one, mandating, and we eliminated wetlands from density calculations, which had a significant impact, I would think, any lots that had wetlands on it, that now impacts positively, like I want to say, it's one point, I think one of the, the last, is 1.27 acres per dwelling unit. And as we, as we increase lot sizes, I mean, you're suggesting that it wouldn't reduce density, but I'm having a hard time figuring out how that wouldn't.
Well, what you've done is you've, I suppose on all property that didn't have any wetlands or some sort of protected area like that, it could impact density.
Depends on the project.
But generally, you're going to have wetlands on a parcel proposed for subdivision, and that's why you've reduced, you've removed density counts from wetlands and require that to be put in open space.
It may not...
So, it's, so it does not necessarily directly impact density, it can, it could indirectly impact it.
Well, that, that's in fact exactly what I'm suggesting, is that I, I think, you know, the big driver was reducing density, which reduced the number of houses, and we haven't even got off the base. I, I don't know that we've seen a subdivision yet with what our changes, that, that our changes impacted, correct? I mean, those new subdivisions...
There's some being discussed, though.
I don't, I don't believe so. I think you're correct, I don't...
Lotus Ridge.
No, Lotus Ridge was residentially zoned and was traditional development.
And, and I, you know, well, one of the points when we were talking this through, we had people come up and say, I don't want that big of a lot, right?
Oh, no, I, trust me.
I mean, that, you know, having, having a available product to people to be able to decide, as they move through the phases of their life, and they want to downsize to a small lot, and not have to maintain three quarters of an acre.
And we still have MXR, there are still options out there, right? This is not the only option.
There are other, correct, there's option of rezoning, depending on the location of the property. I mean, to, to your point about impacting this particular development, the wetlands aren't part of the, of the, the density calculation, that's correct, but imagine that the wetlands aren't wetlands, they're just open space.
Right. Yeah, there's still open space no matter what, right?
Right.
At the end of the day.
So, open space that's not wetlands is included in your density calculation. It's the wetlands that, that are not.
Bottom line, regardless of it's 25 or 30, it does not increase density.
Right. So, are we...
Does it reduce?
It, it...
It depends on if it's, it depends, I mean, it has...
I think that's our, it's going to further reduce density.
Most likely, it would.
Yeah.
And that's what our citizens, I think, have been asking us to do, and we've done that with the text amendment to redo how conservation subdivisions are plotted, and to me, this is another step towards the need to keep this rule feel of Currituck to slow down, house after house, that has taxed our infrastructure. And I just think this is the right time to do this text amendment.
For, the thing was, we talked about doing unlimited service, not single-family mainland everywhere, not every single lot, everywhere. That's...
This would be mainland-wide across the board, if they did a...
That's correct. With this particular amendment, there's no differentiation on land use plan classification.
And that would just be for mainland-wide, for as any project there forward.
Right. So, a little bit different than what we talked about.
We heard the residents that wanted, and they spoke to a house per acre with a one-acre lot size. We addressed that concern through the conservation subdivisions, which wound up resulting in greater than, you know, average lot size being in excess of one acre per dwelling unit. So, we actually exceeded what our residents were asking for, by the way, it's currently laid out. Again, I would, you know, and, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to see a comparison where we can really look at, what did we get for our 5,000 square feet? I mean, I appreciate the fact that we found a subdivision that had, in essence, basically 30,000 square foot lots, but that doesn't, and I'm pretty good with blueprints and layouts and that kind of stuff, but I can't visualize what a 20,000, a $25,000, or 25,000, 25,000 square foot lot would do versus a 30,000 square foot lot. And I think that would be, I mean, and this is just me personally, I, I would like to see apples to apples, rather than the only one that we could come up with, and I get it, right? It's the only one we have, so I completely understand that, that's not speaking, you know, but I really think we need to look more at this.
Mr. Chairman, this is a little different than what we just originally discussed. Sounds like a lot of questions are flying out here. Paul likes to use comparisons. Should we possibly take some time to go back and look at what we originally talked about versus this, get some answers for some of the commissioners, and then have a better understanding of what we want? Because you're right, this is a little different than what's really discussed.
So, this is, so, yes, is the answer to that question, my opinion, okay? But the question is, do we keep this alive, or do we just kill it off and start over again with talking to the staff, or, you know, move this to a future meeting and allow them to gather some data? And if we, if we do do the 30,000s lot size in limited service only, I think my understanding is that would be okay to do that, rather than sticking on every single, single-family mainland lot.
And the, and the 30,000 would basically be almost like three quarters of an acre, and the 25 is roughly...
So, could, could we modify this then to make it what we talked about, and then if we have to address the other?
Well, no, I'm saying, we can, we can leave this on, we can table this for now, right? Have this, get, let staff get together, present us maybe what's, maybe not if it's an actual neighborhood, but modeling side-by-side what two pieces of property would look like, one a 30,000 square foot lot, and one a 25,000 square foot lot. Rather than having them have to go all the way back through this process again, and if we decide that it works for us, fine, you know, then we can just, we can, we can bring this back onto the agenda, we just have to put it on a future meeting.
Okay, but I mean, my, I guess my point, if we do decide to move forward this, we have to tweak it a little bit, we can actually tweak this document, though, correct?
Well, I think we need to talk to Megan, but I think if we just say, if we take it from...
No, you can make changes, yeah.
So, we can, we can get the information, come back, make some changes, then vote on and adopt it, if we, if we choose to.
Yes. And if you wanted to, to move even tonight, to have that less restrictive language, like limited service, you can do that as well, or continue it.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm not saying the 30,000 is a bad number, I think you just, I think we do want to see some comparisons.
Thought process.
Right.
So, and I, and I don't think we should adopt this tonight, because none of us are prepared to do that, there's, there's too many questions surrounding it. So, for us to put it, and I guess the, the big thing is to figure out when, when we would put this on, do we, we would need to, because it is a public hearing, put it on a future meeting, a date time certain, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So...
The next, I mean, to get...
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have a work session.
Right, so we're going to need to go out probably a month, at least, I would think. Jenny, you probably got a few things on your desk right now, don't you?
Yes.
So, just leave this as it is, but just push it out for a month.
Face that everything.
Pretty much, yeah. So, if we take this out into maybe April 15th, maybe? And give, give them plenty of time, I know, I know they got a lot going on.
That'll be a happy night, April 15th.
Right. Okay. So, let's, let's...
Mr. Chairman, I want to move that we tabled this and continue it until April 15th, so the staff can bring us some options.
Can I, before we do that, can I ask you any question?
Of course.
Jenny, I was just punching different neighborhoods in the county, and what type, like Coin Jack Meadows, right there behind UR Next, what type of subdivision was that? Is that traditional?
It was a PRD, a Planned Residential Development, that is no longer an option for. There's no longer any...
I was just, there are lot sizes, I was looking, those, those were something, they're lot sizes, a lot of them were like 25, were right, you know, right around the 40 to half acre, I was just trying to find something.
Right.
I second it.
Second it, Paul? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Thank you. Anybody need a break before we jump into new business? All right. Next up, board appointments. Item A, appointment of Barbara Courtney to serve on the Trillium Health Advisory. Was this a particular member's, or was it a...
She's been on there before, I don't know if she...
She's been on there before, I'm not sure whose it is. She's, she's served on the opioid task force with myself.
Right.
Very knowledgeable.
If you'd like to...
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up this evening, we have consent agenda. Is there any comment, questions, concerns about anything in the consent agenda this evening?
Need for approval.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. At this time, I'll recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and we will move into a special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority. And we had a couple budget amendments in there. Let's see here, I think everything in there was self-explanatory, so I'll move to approve the TDA budget amendments.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next thing up was a discussion of expanding membership on the Tourism Advisory Board. Myself and Kevin had spoken at some point, and I don't know if he's spoken to you, Paul, now that you're on the Tourism Advisory Board, but the game commission would like to be more involved, I guess, with the Tourism Advisory Board, and as this is the sportsman's paradise, it might not be a bad idea. Question is really probably whether or not, if we expand the board, is it one or two people, and let the Tourism, the game commission decide who their appointee is.
And the game commission, one thing I'd like to note, the game commission is a state board, correct? No, it's a county board, but they're, they're state mandated, is what I meant to say. Is that correct, attorneys?
By legislation.
Created by local legislation.
But it's mandated by...
Their decisions are, are final, we can't change their decisions.
So, basically, we're really just bringing a voice from the game commission over to Tourism, as part of, we're doing this rebranding right now with Tourism and the mainland and looking at all that, so the, the question is, do we want to, we want to incorporate them into that discussion and ha, and let them have a presence in our, in our Tourism?
I think we should, because it is a big, fishing and hunting is a big...
That's a big part of our heritage.
I think we should, but I don't think we need to bring two members.
Okay.
I think one is enough.
And there's only two counties that have a game board, Currituck and Dare.
Okay. So, with that being said, we would probably have to bring some language forward to amend the Tourism Development Authorities.
To allow...
Yes.
Carter, how they work, how that board works, right?
Yeah.
Why couldn't you just do it as a liaison?
Yeah. We could do that, too, voting member or non-voting member, I mean, it doesn't...
Voting on the TDA is kind of...
Right. Well, they have a hard time meeting numbers, so it might actually help them out to have a vote, another member...
You know what? It might actually help them out to have two, because sometimes there's, but, I mean, regardless.
Let's see how it works.
Add one, and if we need to add one later.
Can we have our attorney bring some options and language back to us, then?
Sure.
How about?
Okay.
But, but, at the end of the day, I think having them vote helps us out with meeting quorum for that particular board, so, all right. All right. With that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn the Ocean Sands, or, excuse me, the TDA? Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, with that, we will now move into the Ocean Sands Sewer and Water District, and we have some budget amendments in there as well. And that was all, we got all kinds of stuff being fixed over there, and some sole source purchases. Any questions, comments, concerns from the board?
Nope.
All right. Well, I'll move for approval of that as well, the budget amendments, and the sole, sole source purchase.
Say that again, please? No, I'm just kidding.
A motion for the budget?
For both agenda items.
Okay, okay.
I did have one issue, the columns were not equal on the budget amendments on that page 52, and I wasn't sure why that was, but...
Oh, yeah, it is different. We've got data transmission 1,400, water from another 200, and diesel subscriptions at 15. And then, under the credit side, it is...
So, I didn't know if that was intentional, accidental, or what.
Wow, yeah, they're completely different. It's not even the same, credit doesn't work out, and one's 216, 400, and one's 216, if I'm counting enough, right?
And it may not matter, but I did notice it.
Hmm.
We have eyes looking out, yeah, we have...
What's happening, yeah?
It should, it should equal, they should balance.
Okay, they're, they're not, though, because of the data transmission.